Welcome to Queen Anne's County Board Education Work Session for February 23rd, 2022. Motion going to closed session?
You start pursuant to the General Provisions Act, Section 3, that's 305 and 104. Board of Education will meet in closed session to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this body has jurisdiction, and any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those members say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. We will be back at regular thing at 5 o'clock. Thank you. Welcome to the Queen Anne's County Board Education Work Session for February 23rd, 2022. Can we stand up to pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Do I have approval of agenda for this evening? They're moved. Second?
Second.
All those members say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Approval of minutes for February the 2nd closed session. Everybody had a chance to look at those?
Yep.
Do I have a motion?
Yep.
A motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Approval of minutes for February the 2nd open session. Everybody had a chance to look at those?
Yes.
Motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Approval of minutes for February the 9th budget work session. Everybody had a chance to look at those?
Yes.
Move for approval of the minutes, February 9th, 2022, budget work session.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. And our final one would be approval of the February 9th closed session.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you. Okay. Our next thing will be an informational item. Dr. Salins, could you give us an update on COVID-19?
Yes. I'd like to focus on the mask mandate and kind of just review with the board just the timeline. I'm sure as most of you can recall, in September, the State Board of Education during one of their meetings recommended to institute a mask mandate through the state of Maryland. That recommendation went to the AELR. That is a legislative body of about 15 legislators who come together for purposes of passing emergency regulations or laws. And so that committee had a hearing, got together, and they ultimately voted and determined that there would be a mask mandate in place for a given period of time through the state of Maryland. They met again subsequently following that to extend that through the remainder of the school year. And then, most recently, the state board this past week got together and listened to quite a bit of comments from the community and made a recommendation back to the AELR to rescind the mask mandate and make that back to a local decision for each jurisdiction to look at their own data to determine. And so that would create the local opportunity to make masking a choice. So Friday, the AELR will get together at 2:30 on Friday afternoon. They will take a vote to determine whether they will be accepting that recommendation. The exact recommendation is, again, to rescind the mask mandate to throw that back to the local authority as of March 1st. So I just want to update the board on that, see if they had any questions. We have prepared communications already for hopefully when and if we do get that local authority back, that we will make that a choice for students and for parents. And for that matter, anyone who enters one of our buildings. So it wouldn't just take effect into our schools. That would be across Queen Anne's County public schools as a whole in any building. So we're prepared to do that and just kind of waiting for that news to be released. I do anticipate, honestly, that they will move that direction and that that will be, again, as of March 1st, will give us the opportunity to have that personal choice. So that is just my update for the board, and I will certainly, if anybody has any questions.
No questions. So what we're saying is, we're thinking that if they do that, then we're saying that we're going to make it optional as of March 1st, and we'll be ready to, all of our stuff, be ready to shoot it out there to...
Yes, exactly.
Wonderful.
Yep.
And I, you know, I know this board's frustrated because I've talked to individuals and probably on a daily basis, Dr. Salins. You know, we've been masked, what, two months ago? We were getting numbers on a daily basis from the state on where our numbers were.
Yeah.
And then all of a sudden, there's a breach in this computer, and we haven't gotten these numbers. And my understanding, and I'm not going to, but I've talked to some people, and the interesting thing I found out was, we're in our state numbers. Our state numbers are okay. Then all of a sudden, we went to CDC numbers. It's very frustrating when they changed the playing field at the end, when this could have been done probably a week or two ago in Queen Anne's County.
Well, I would not be opposed of them saying we've hit that off-ramp and have them have to show that we did not hit that off-ramp.
I agree with that, but the one thing is, and I've talked to a couple of people, and I'm not going to mention them because it's, one of them's been our lawyer. There's Comor regulations, and it looks like Friday, if everything goes like it should, we can, the mask will be lifted in Queen Anne's County. I want to make it clear, it will be in our school, if it happens, it will be in our schools and in our offices. Federal law still takes place over school buses.
That's exactly right.
They will still have to ride on the bus, have to be masked. And I also say, for the people which I'm sure we're going to get, somebody says we should stay masked. Everybody can wear a mask if they want to. It's optional. You can wear one, you can wear two. That's up to you, how you want to do it. But hopefully, it will be voted on that, and we can get back to, I mean, we've been, this coming March, two years with this, and we know it's hurt our children with COVID, being out of school and everything else going on. And, you know, I think this could be a big turning point, and I think this whole board's on the same page.
Absolutely.
That, you know, ASAP, as soon as we can get that done.
Yep, we are ready to go.
Anybody else?
No, it's just, right, it's overdue.
Yeah.
It is.
Yeah, you know, it was unfortunate that this even had to come down back in September when they went to the AELR in the first place, because my recollection is that we had 22 counties out of 24 that were going mask mandate anyway, like we did.
That's correct.
You know, there was only two. I think Carroll was one of them, and I can't remember the other. And it's unfortunate that they squandered that opportunity to have those counties go mask optional to see how it would work.
Right.
You know, and do these masks really work in the classrooms and et cetera. So, you know, hopefully, in the future, this never happens, but if it does, then, you know, the next board will consider that before they go full force on a statewide mandate.
I agree completely, and if you listen to the, you know, to the meeting, our state superintendent specifically said that the state had to step in because the locals weren't doing what they needed to do. And I disagree with that statement.
Sure.
There was two that were making that decision based on their community or whatnot. But I agree with you. It should always be local authority. Our districts are all different, our metrics are different, and we should have the opportunity to assess what's going on in our community and meet the needs of our community. And so it is well overdue, and I completely support it. And as soon as we get the word, we will absolutely, we are geared up and ready to go.
Great.
Out of the gate.
And just so the board knows, it is on the agenda for next Wednesday, which is our regular board meeting in March. It should be a non-issue hopefully by then, but it is on our agenda if we need to discuss it at that time. But like Dr. Salins says, 2:30 on Friday, hopefully it could be over with. Any further discussion?
Interesting timing for them, Friday, right?
Yeah, well. Okay.
I'll reserve comment on that.
I said, interesting timing.
You know, I must say, I know the board's frustrated because they, I've had comments, I've been frustrated, and like I said, Dr. Salins has been frustrated, but it can be passed, so we're going to move forward. Next thing is 402 capital and non-recurring projects.
Thank you.
Good evening. President Smith, Dr. Salins, board members, Sid Pender, Chief Operating Officer.
Carla Pullin, Facilities Planner.
And we are here tonight to go over the, we're here tonight to go over the capital and non-recurring projects. In the past year, I don't know, five or six years, you're going to see a little bit of different format than what we've normally done. You're looking tonight at the capital, which will be your true CIP, which is partial funding by the state, partial funding by the county. It's a 51-49 split. It's been that way for a few years. They do go back every couple of years and reevaluate that to determine, you know, if they need to level that out some. You'll see other counties that have a higher share, but we've typically been for about 50-50. But again, like I said, it's 49-51 right now. And what we're going to show you tonight, there's a lot of things that are changing. You know, the prices of certain bids are coming in high, the availability of product, the price of the product, labor have all escalated, along with fuel. And some of the projects that we have put out there, we have to rebid, you know, obviously, to see where they're coming in. We're still waiting. Carla was on a conference call today with the state, you know, waiting for them to say, hey, we're going to fully fund this, or we're not going to fully fund that. So what you see tonight, you know, may change in the upcoming years. For FY '23, that's going to stay, you know, consistent with what we have. There are different pots of money that are becoming available. We've always had the Aging School Fund, which is where a building that's 15 years or older, we get funding from the state to do repairs and things like that. And that's where we used to use our painting from, but then they cut that out, and you cannot use it for painting anymore. So what we're trying to do tonight is align the budget. One of the things the county commissioners asked us years ago, could you kind of come to us with a consistent number year after year so that when we're budgeting this, we don't have to go, okay, you want 20 million this year, and then you want 5 million next year? So we've kind of tried to position ourselves with that. We did a facility assessment about six, seven years ago that really laid out our 20-year plan of what's the life cycle of the building, major components of HVAC, VCT, you know, the building shell, roof, those types of things, to kind of give us a ballpark. So in the years past, we would come here and say, okay, here's our facility assessment. We're kind of budgeting for 1.2 million just to keep up our facilities. All of that now, and you've seen that in some presentations, is now incorporated into the operating budget that we're proposing for this year. So tonight, what you'll see is truly the CIP, one or two projects that are fully funded by the county, and we'll go into that. And if you've got any questions at the end, please feel free to ask. It's a pretty straightforward presentation. So what we have, we have for the FY '23 projects, we have the Bayside Elementary Security Vestibule, and that would cost 82,000 local. And then we also have a, we applied for a grant for the Safe Schools, Safe Schools, Maryland Center for Safety does a Safe Schools grant. We applied for that, and we were awarded $56,000 to go along with that. When you see the security vestibule, basically, you go into Bayside Elementary School, you can go right, left, anywhere you want to go as soon as you get in there. So we're trying to, you know, have all of our schools consistent with a, you know, a single-point entry when you come in there. Some of them are easier than others, just based upon, you know, how the building was laid out. The next one you'll see is Kent Island High School track resurfacing. That track is about 24 years old. It has never been resurfaced. We were able to patch it in a few spots a few years ago. But if you recall, the county commissioners, when they installed the turf in the stadiums, they were trying to resurface the tracks at the same time. Funding just was not available at the end of that project. So resurfacing the track would be a county-funded also project.
The next item that we're showing is the construction portion for the new central office building. This is a $14 million ask. That's what we're anticipating. That's over a two-year budget cycle. The following item, Queen Anne's County High School, the roof replacement. This is the county share of a $9.1 million ask between the state and the county. As Mr. Pender alluded to, there is grossly overinflated numbers that we're getting right now due to schedule, due to building material, due to lack of materials and getting them to the location. At one point, we had thought that the state was going to forego this ask. In fact, they told us as much, and as they've gone through the evolution of their budget, it now looks like they will be fully funding this $4.9 million amount to us, so, or $4.1 million amount to the state, so we would be asking the county for 4.9 of that.
This is a complete replacement, right? This was not a...
Yes, this is a complete replacement. This will also help us to solve some issues with some parapet walls that are around that roofing section that is desperately needed. And then we have another security vestibule project, I'm sorry.
Just to tag on to that.
Yep.
Kent Island High School is being run, their building has a roof thing, and last year, it was 2.4 million from the county. So if I take just 50-50, that's 4.8, and I'm thinking, we've been told 8, 9 million like this one, what's going on with that project? And it's, I know it's not in this capital, it's in a previous one, but is the county and the state going to take care of that too?
Well, at this point, we have $4 million allotted for the Kent Island High School roof. That will be bid in...
For for the county?
No, that's overall total. So it's about 2.1 from the county, and I think it's 2.3 or 4 from the state.
Okay.
So that was anticipated to be a $4 million project when that was initially requested.
Right.
Since COVID has happened, we're looking at potentially an $8 million bid result for that roofing project.
It's double.
That is anticipated to happen in the April timeframe. We're going to see what happens when those bids come in, and that's part of the discussion we're having with the state right now. What does that look like if those bids do come in that high? What type of additional aid the state is able to do, and where we go from there?
But if the state says they will go like this one up, and I'm talking last year's capital.
Yes.
Is the county aware that we might be asking for additional couple million dollars just to, is it on their radar screen?
Well, I think, I think we're going to look at some additional options before we do that. So in the conversations with the state, there is a new fund, fairly recent fund called the Healthy School Fund, that at one point was established to help with the HVAC projects around the state and some of those that weren't necessarily happening as they would. The state has gotten much more money in that fund. So now they're looking at 90 million. Half of that is allotted to one of the county school systems. The rest of that, the 45 million, then goes into allotments for all of the other counties. They're prioritizing roof projects in this Healthy School Fund now. So there is some discussion that potentially, if the bids do not go our way, we could rescind that project from our CIP ask, apply in the Healthy School Fund, and potentially get all 8 million for that.
Okay, I'm sorry.
When would you get that information?
We'll start to have that information as soon as the bids come in, so we know in the April-May timeframe, that's when we're going to be having those conversations with the state and before our budgets are solidified.
We push a lot of projects back. Roof is something that concerns me greatly because either pay me now or pay me later. If you don't pay me now, it's going to be a lot later.
That's exactly right.
And that's just, you know, I know it's not in this budget, but it's just, you know, we've heard that, and so there is a plan, hopefully, to get the state to do that, and then we would, and that's a two-year project, Mr. Pender, or like what, do you do in the summer of this year and then summer of next year?
And just also keep in mind, like, when these projects become funded, it typically starts the following year, because we're not going to get funding until July 1st. Well, there's no possible way that we can do it. So some of these ones that you're seeing, it'd be, you know, next, next summer being, you know, performed.
Will there be some overlap then? Will they still be on QAC, maybe Kent Island, when they start work on the Queen Anne's County? Is there an overlap?
Potentially, potentially. And some of that, we want to leave up to the contractor. We don't want to back them into a corner on schedule. We want to leave some flexibility so that they're able to determine how and when they can get that done. So yes, if they're able to do it over one summer, we would gladly accept that. If we need to push it to two, then there's likely to be some overlap.
Okay. I'd like to make one thing, my understanding is we just went off, we're supposed to be on live stream for this budget here, and we just went offline. We had a problem. We're back on now. Jeff, if, can you just throw your hands up wildly to me, and we will stop this meeting by law if it's not livestreamed?
Okay. It's on Facebook as well and on cable.
I will, I'll make that decision, but just make sure if you find out we're not going live, you get ahold of somebody up here.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And then the, the last item on there is the Kent Island High School Security Vestibule, and that is 93,000 local. And then we were also able to secure Maryland Center for School Safety Grant for 93,000 to match that.
Now, Queen Anne's is not on there?
It's funded for this year.
Yes, you are. That was, sorry.
Canard and Queen Anne's County High School.
Got you.
Kent Island is, that's going to be a challenging one also, because when you walk in.
[laughing].
For FY '24 capital projects, again, these are future projects. The first one, Canard Elementary School Fire Alarm Replacement, 309,000, you know, would be the local share. We're also looking in the past, if you, we've replaced Graysonville Elementary's, Kent Island High School, I'm missing one.
Churchill Elementary.
Churchill Elementary School. So they've met their life cycle, truly, and we've got our money out of them, and it's time to replace them. They're a life safety option, so we're focusing on that at that particular time. You'll see this year for FY '24, the Queen Anne's County High School Track Resurfacing, again, that was supposed to be incorporated into the stadium when they did the turf. Funding wasn't there. That would be supplied by the county for that price, 330,000.
For fiscal year '24, we anticipate that we would have the second round of funding, $7 million for the construction of the new central office building. And we also anticipate that we will be asking for planning and design funding from both the state and the county. We show here a $5 million cost. Piece of good news is that the state is now participating in design costs as well as furniture and FFNE. So 10% of the project cost is what we could allot to design fees. We would then pay 50% of that. So we would be asking 50% of that from the state and 50% of that in the county in our CIP process. But that's good news, because that hasn't happened for a very, very, very long time, and that, of course, on a building of that size would be a huge amount. Fiscal year '25, we're looking at the construction funding for the renovation or the replacement of Centerville Middle School. We have 9.5 million shown for fiscal year '25, but we again expect that we are going to use a combination of funding for this particular project. So there is Built to Learn funding that is a recent addition from the state. We're currently allotted 8 million in that pot of money, and then we would combine that with traditional CIP funding. So as we normally go in in October with our asks, we would be looking at how we could utilize both of these funding sources together.
You guys had had the central, the planning and design amount at 5 million and said that it was about 5 million, and that's about 10% of...
Yes, so we're anticipating a 10, a 50 million? Or close. At this point, we're close.
For the middle school, 50 million?
Yeah, easy, yeah, actually. Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
And if you look at, we've tried to keep it within range, you know, 12 million each year, 12, close to 13 million. But with capital, you're never going to have it exact the whole time, because you may be constructing a new building, and, you know, that's going to jump it way up. So we're trying to keep it steady, but again, you're going to see some years where it does fluctuate with that. For FY '25, the other capital project would be, of course, the replacement of the fire alarm system at Queen Anne's County High School, 441,000.
And then fiscal year '26, this would be remaining funding for that construction for Centerville Middle School. Again, that total may look a little bit different once we have the different pots of money and we figure out exactly what part we'll be funding it.
And instead of Centerville Middle School, building renovations, we're talking either new building probably or...
Or a complete renovation.
It's not, we're not committed on renovations right now.
No, we are not.
It's going to be something to be decided in the future.
Correct. The feasibility study will give us that information.
But now you've only got, okay, I'm just trying to work these numbers. So the 5 million for the planning and design, which is about 10%, so it's 50 million. Are you doing an FY '27 for more? Because that was, even if we do the half and half, it's only 40, 40 million now, right, with those two years of CMS?
It's, it's possible. And again, that will look at how much more money we're allotted in future years, which we don't know yet from the Built to Learn Act. We're hoping that we will see over 8 million, and in future years, we should definitely see more of that. We also anticipate that our capital request number could be, we could get an allotment a little more than that as well.
I tell you, the Build to Learn Act is something totally different that includes the Maryland Stadium Authority, and it's a whole different process than the traditional, you know, CIP. It's, Carla's constantly coming in the office, hey, this changed today, that changed, you know, and it's like, how do you truly put a number on it right now? I mean, it's, I've never seen it like this before. It's very, very tough. Our last slide is what we refer to as non-recurring projects. And basically, what we're looking at is what kind of initiative is associated with it? Are we starting, you know, something new? Can we improve on some kind of safety aspect of it? Really, FY '23, Queen Anne's County High School paving and milling, we really want to get, if you've pulled up to Queen Anne's County High School during arrival or dismissal time, it is, I'm a student, I can attest to this, and I sit in it every day, drop my daughter off. We really need to do some relining, and we need to do some direction control, some drainage to make it a more safer environment when you drop them off. Plus, that's the, the drainage there is, it's bad. We're looking, and again, if you look at our facility assessment, this is another item where we've been trying to mill and overlay. We did Churchill Elementary School, we did Sellersville Elementary School. You know, next on our list, we have, of course, Queen Anne's County High School, but also Kent Island High School. And, you know, we looked at a few different options of what is the best route to go? Can we do another access road? That would take forever to get approval by the state highway administration after you do traffic studies.
That's a state highway.
Yeah. And then where you're looking at that is right next to Acme, they've really frowned upon in the past of putting other, you know, entrances and exits, that intersection there. So this will be a great time to, you know, do the safety enhancements, and then also, you know, do the milling and overlay, which is desperately needed there. I can't tell you the last time, besides Sellersville Elementary School and Churchill prior to that, unless it was a brand-new school, that was the only time we've had blacktop installed. It's just been patched up, patched up, and you can only do that for so long. So really, what we've tried to focus is kind of keep the numbers consistent through those next few years, around 550,000 of our ask. Like I said, we try to keep it in one constant time and amount. Universal Pre-K will be coming up, you know, getting that furniture allotted for the classroom for you, for Pre-K. And then FY '24 also, playground equipment has about a life expectancy of about 20 years. Parks and Rec has a certified inspector that comes through and inspects our equipment every year. These, our schools are coming to an end of the life expectancy of the playground equipment. It's a major liability issue. You truly can't get the parts to replace the ones that are broken on them. But I will say this, playground equipment is not a cheap, it's not a cheap route. It's a very expensive route, but you also have to make sure that when you're making these changes, it's ADA compliant for all students to have the access to it. So if you look at FY '24, that would be about 550,000. The next year would be Kent Island Elementary School replacement for playground equipment for 350,000. And then again, Universal Pre-K, classroom furniture, for a total of 550,000. We could go out more years up, you know, in advance of that, but you'll be seeing playground equipment coming back and coming back and coming back, because it's another one of those items where it always gets cut, and we're past the point of, you know, getting cut. It's, you know, we've got to do something now to maintain or at one time to... We could go out more years up, you know, in advance of that, but you'll be seeing playground equipment coming back and coming back and coming back because it's another one of those items where it always gets cut. And we're past the point of, you know, getting cut. It's, you know, we've got to do something now to maintain or at one time, you're going to have several million dollars requested for replacing it all at one time. So we're trying to spread that out every time. Any questions?
Any questions by the way?
Thank you.
One thing I'd like to note to the public is that, you know, some of this has changed because our Chromebooks and our painting now is in a different category.
Yes, sir.
This used to be, it's not something we're not putting in, but it has to be going in our operating budget.
That's correct.
Due to accounting regulations that we've been audited with. So some things you don't see in here that you ask us about, it's not, they're just going in a different, I think it's 15 or something, category 15 in our budget, that you can find out where that's going to be. And that was something that was beyond our control. We've explained it to the commissioners, commissioners understand. I think we didn't do it a lot this year because it was a, it was a transition year. But it is something that we're on, but it's not in this budget as some of us are used to seeing it every, you know.
And it's important to keep it on that cycle so we can keep those buildings going on.
Oh, it's like painting and stuff. I mean, you know, it, that was Dr. Salins and Mr. Pender in Canard and, you know, that school is open, you know, the doors flying, you know, every day. It's, it's like being in a mall, you know what I mean? It's not, it's not like your house. So they, they take a lot of wear and tear. And even the thing they showed us about the gymnasium, which was not done properly 10 or 20 years ago, it's always something, you know? It never stops.
It's not like a traditional house where you've got four people going in and out maybe two to three times a day. You know, I will say, if you get a chance, stop by Queen Anne's County High School. There's the new cafeteria tables in there.
Okay.
It has made a tremendous difference in just the kids' attitudes, the staff's attitudes. You no longer have the tables that have been there for 30, 40 years that you can't get up and down. Our custodian staff is very excited because the chair, the stool is actually attached to it. So instead of removing 400 chairs every single day, you know, and the poor custodian that's in charge of it, she's actually retiring this year. So she, her chair's not going to get, you know, be able to fully appreciate that. But it's a, it's a move in the right direction. It's really added a big difference to that, that cafeteria. So, thank you.
Have any other?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Our next thing would be our future board meetings. Next Wednesday, we will have our regular scheduled board meeting. Actually, I know we have work sessions in the middle of the month. Do we have a budget, extra budget work session scheduled at all?
We have March 2nd is our regular meeting. And then we have March 9th is our budget. Yep, is our budget.
And then the 16th could be our work session.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Have any other questions or things for the calls?
Were we going to talk at all about the clay target? Or are we doing that another time?
I mean, I don't have it on the thing. If you want to bring something up-
I thought I put it out there for us to, you know, just, I know that Sean-
I mean, we, we talked about it. It's, it's at 10. I think they've started, Mr. Pender, they've, in their process.
It's, we're reading out currently, it's, it's 10 members on one team. That combination of Queen Anne's and Kent Island High School is currently what it has.
For the, for the spring?
For the spring, yes, sir.
And then there'll be a fall, in the fall that can be looked at again.
Sid, how would you feel about, because I know Sean asked, he said he had 32 people sign up. What if we split the difference and made it 16? That's still, he has enough coaches for, he, for like, he said he had enough coaches for all of them, but I know we don't want to stress it with it being the pilot program. What if we, you know, did a little bit? And then we'd be in a good position for the next semester to maybe even be more competitive because we'd have some experience under about, how would you feel about that if we did the 16?
Something we'd have, I'd have to take a look at. I mean, he did send us an email, I just, you know, I need to take-
I mean, I feel like it's a pilot. Let us get out, let us kind of figure it out right now. And, and I feel confident that we're going to be able to do that and then we can open it up the following year, like we had discussed before. But it is a pilot program. It's certainly something that no one else has really taken on the challenge through the state of Maryland. I think that we should really be cautious and careful to make sure that we cross every T, dot every I and that we, you know, make sure that we take every precautionary step that we do this right the first time, so we get it right so that we can duplicate the process. So I, I would, you know, respectfully ask that we, let's stick to our plan that we had for this spring and then we can move forward from there.
My only thing with it was, is the first time we brought it up, when you approved it, I'm sorry, this is before you, Dr. Salins, is that we did not limit it to 10. So I'm not sure how we even got it to the 10, but we didn't limit it to the 10. And I know that such an opportunity for scholarships and it's so inclusive, so it's the only sport that we have. And if he's got the coaches for it, we're only talking eight people from each stool, eight students from Queen Anne's County, eight students from Kent Island. And, you know, it's the only, I know it's a pilot, I know we're the first ones in Maryland, which I'm very excited about that, but it's the only sport ever that's never had an injury. I mean, I think, you know, we're, I think it is that we have dotted our I's and crossed our T's. I just think, I just feel bad for them because these students have been waiting two years for this.
Well, I'm, my view is I'm happy we have it. I think it's a, will be a good program. 10 was a number, but I mean, I know we talked about other things at one time. It was recommended, not for safety, but you know, it's a, it's a new sport. You have, once you go farther down with this thing, it would be, it'd be good to go deeper next year maybe, but I, I'm a firm believer that I have no problem in taking the recommendations that we got to stay at 10 this year. And, you know, there are other programs, I guess, skeet shooting groups in the county, not in the school, that could shoot other places if they had to. But I would, I'd say we stay where we are right now for that discussion, but-
The reason 10 came up, that's the number that is associated with one coach. So it's 10 students per coach. That's where that came from.
Right, I think he had four coaches.
Sean, do you have any comment or your mark?
No, just that we did talk about this in open session and, and I'm comfortable with Sid's recommendation from before, even though we had voted on it with 20, just because of the nature of the program, that, you know, little by little, we'll get there and it'll be open up to more people. So I'm fine with 10.
Okay. Any further discussion? 25 of 6. Anybody else got anything better to do? We have a motion to retire.
Motion, yes.
I have a second.
One second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, so have it.